Okay, welcome to the... First of all, Danny, would you like to give an invocation?
Trying to be ready for the next one.
That's easy. We're too fast for you.
Would you like me to give it?
Sure.
Okay, is that our...
Yes, sir, that's fine.
It's Attorney Tom Kirk.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, and we thank you for the opportunity to be able to come before you and to assemble as your children, and Lord, we thank you for all of our blessings. As we deliberate the business of this council in this meeting, may the words of our mouths and may the meditations of our heart be acceptable in thy sight, our Lord, our strength, and our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
All right, amen. Okay. Call this October 22nd, 2013, regular meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Danny, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iyer, District 2.
Present.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
Present.
Councilmember Joe Gevia, District 4.
Present.
Mayor Davis, we have a quorum.
All right, could you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Opening remarks? I have none. And there's... I think Mr. Madison has something.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order.
Please state your point of order.
The motion voted upon at the September 24th, 2013, meeting to approve the application of Artisan Home Crafters, LLC, to amend the zoning ordinance to rezone 2.6 acres of land located on East Roxborough Road and Wright Avenue from RNDC to R60, received two votes in favor and one vote against. The city charter requires three affirmative votes to carry such motion.
Point of order is well taken, since the city charter provides that the mayor may vote in such instances where a third affirmative vote is necessary to pass or approve a motion. I will entertain a motion to reopen the motion by Mr. Madison and seconded by Ms. Williams on September 24th, 2013, to approve the rezoning of said tract.
I shall move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. We'll take the vote, and if it passes, Ms. Cannon, would you please read the motion offered by Mr. Madison and seconded by Ms. Williams? So just wait till the motion passes, then you can read that if it does. It's all in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
No, this is the motion to reopen.
To reopen.
This is the motion.
It's just the aye.
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 All right, that's five ayes. All opposed? All right, Ms. Cannon, would you please...
Councilman Madison moved to approve RZ 1306, subject to conditions 1 through 7, with revised date of September 24th, 2013. Councilwoman Williams seconded the motion.
All right. Any questions on that? All right, I'll call a question. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we so approve.
Sir, I'm sorry. I know this is confusing, but the motion is on the floor now, having been...
Okay.
Having already been made, so it really just has to come to a vote.
Okay, all right. Is all in favor of approval of the motion? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, since there's a tie, I'll vote yes to break the tie, so the motion passes 3 to 2.
Thank you. We have a comment time?
How about... Yeah, well, you know, point of order to allow you to have a little comment, go ahead.
I was not here for this original vote, and my vote on this was no, but I must also state, this is probably the number-one project in District 4 that I was looking to put across the board here because of the situation in that area. My no vote was simply because it was out of our code. We have contiguous, non-conforming lots that I would have hoped would have come into order. The applicant had plenty of opportunity to do it. I'm looking for consistency in how we make our decisions, and this was not consistent in the manner of how we've done our ordinances.
I think that was stated at the prior meeting, too, by others. All right, thank you, Joe. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor, if it pleases the council, I'd like to move consent item number 3 from the consent agenda... Excuse me, from the consent agenda to item K, new business.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of moving number 3 out to K? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, number 3 is moved to a different part of the agenda. All right, now is the time for a public comment, so for anything on the agenda, if you have any comments, just please fill out a form, and Daniel up here will take you and call your name, just come to the microphone, state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes to speak.
Gloria Cofer.
Gloria Cofer, all right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Gloria Cofer. I live in Brookhaven, Shaw Subdivision on Osborne Road. I have three things I'd like to say. First of all, I'm not sure of the status of the lawsuit with the Pink Pony, but my position reflects what was said at a previous meeting, so if it has been resolved, I apologize for the redundancy of my comment. However, my position is that the city council should settle it, we should go forward and accept the Pink Pony in its business where it is, as its grandfathered in, and then make the rules for the future for such businesses. My second comment has to do with plans for addressing the traffic congestion on Peachtree between North Druid Hills and Dresden. I've heard this mentioned in some of the council meetings, and I'm just mentioning it to let you know that I'm still... that we're still there, and we still know that it's really, really congested, and I'm sure everyone's aware of it, and I'd just like to hear if there are any plans in the making. And my third item is, I'd like to hear if there are any plans in the making for sidewalks along Windsor Parkway between Hermance and Mayberry. That's near my neighborhood, kind of where Hermance goes into very near town Brookhaven, yeah, and then further down toward past Osborne and Mayberry. And my last comment is not on the sheet that I turned in, but I want to tell you that I went to the Arts Festival this past weekend, and it was wonderful. I went on Sunday, and it was really a nice event, and I was thrilled to see that happening in Brookhaven. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Marie, is it true we have a transportation plan we got coming up to kind of address congestion issues and whatnot?
Yes, we have already released requests for qualifications for a citywide transportation master plan.
Okay.
And we hope that will be launched in December and with a completion within four months after the first kickoff meeting.
And part of that plan will be to try and address congestion issues wherever they can be.
We'll be looking at vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, and how, one, all of those types of transportations can be accommodated, but also look at congestion points and what alternative design methods are available to us.
All right, Bates or Rebecca, is Hermance to Mayberry exactly in your district or your district? If it's on the north...
Which side of Windsor Parkway?
I think that... I'm trying to think if there are any sidewalks on either side of Windsor Parkway.
Well, in front of the new homes there on that south side.
And on Front Oathor.
They are on that. The missing piece is Osborne to Mayberry. There are sidewalks to Osborne, and there's no sidewalks between Osborne and Mayberry.
I think from Hermance to Osborne, I don't think there are any.
But she's talking about... Well, the question, public comment, was addressing the Windsor Parkway from Hermance to Mayberry and that connection. Connect... And maybe this is a question that staff can answer, if we have sidewalk transportation plans.
We are working on a sidewalk plan citywide. There's been an inventory of sidewalks by our Public Works Director. We are looking at missing links, and part of the transportation plan will include an overall sidewalk plan and a capital improvement plan addressing how we can connect the dots and then identify sources of funds, and then to set up a timeframe in which we would address sidewalks by priority throughout the city, and that would be over a long-range plan and also a short-range plan, five years, and then up to a 20-year program.
Thank you. Next comment, Daniel?
Kim G.
Gerchuk. Gerchuk, Kim Gerchuk. Not Kim... Not Kimchi.
I smell almost as bad as Kimchi. That's a different matter for a different time. I see my clock is running, so I want to thank you, Honorable Mayor Davis and City Council for this public forum. I do have a statement to make. It's really an invitation, but I also wanted to take the liberty of saying, coming up on one year, you guys have done a fabulous job. It's a thankless job. It's a hard job, so thank you for it. I'll come back and complain on another occasion. My name is Kim Gerchuk, and I reside on Fairway Circle, 1955, here in Brookhaven. Brookhaven and I have a long history. My earliest memory is working at the Poolside Grill, flipping hamburgers at the Capital City Club at 16. That was around 1979. My first residency here while I was at Georgia State, go Panthers, in the 80s. I became a property owner in 1995 as a bachelor. More recently, my wife and I got married in our front yard in 2003. There's a granite bench in the front yard to mark the spot. I tease her, and I say, "We can kick that over and make it our tombstone." I tell you these things as contact to the invitation I'm extending to you here this evening. This coming Tuesday night, October 29th, at 6:00 PM, the DeKalb County School District will be hosting what they are billing as a public forum for input on strategic planning for Region 1. If you're not familiar with their administrative district, Region 1, it includes all the schools in Dunwoody, Shambly, and Cross Keys High School attendance areas. That's approximately 11,000 children we're talking about. Though school governance is not part of the city charter, clearly, I'm here to encourage you to attend, to advocate for the interest of Brookhaven area residents as are elected officials. Cross Keys High School opened the same year as St. Pius, in the year Mayor relocated to our community. If you compare these three campuses, it's an embarrassment to our community. I don't think there's much controversy about that. Our public high school has been long neglected. This is a school that's been a Georgia School of Excellence, currently an AP honors high progress school, where we proudly produce a current Oathor Presidential Scholar, go Petrels, a Georgia Tech Presidential Scholar, a Reinhardt Roy Sweta Scholar, a Williams College Full Scholarship winner, an Emory Full Scholarship winner, and a Stanford Full Scholarship winner. They also have academics there, not just football. This school is home to a nationally and internationally recognized academic talent at Cross Keys. You wouldn't know it by looking at it, though, so rather than tie up everyone's time here with my complaints about that, I will leave you with some of the background information in the packets I've distributed to you as an invitation to join next Tuesday night, 6:00 PM, at the Cafeteria at Cross Keys High School at 1626 North Druid Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. If my son doesn't have a playoff game, I'll be there.
Ronnie Mayer.
Ronnie Mayer?
The reason why it's called a Cafeteria is because they never provided an auditorium.
And even Kim leaves his old buddy out. We were at elementary school. Cross Keys, we have Brookhaven activists from Brookhaven, been here since 67 and 1/2. I want to commend y'all on the meeting the other evening. It took some real big ones for y'all to really stand up. I've never been to a meeting with so many women that were there, the age of 25 to 40, and they beat y'all up pretty good. The scary thing is, is y'all kind of misunderstood their point. They wasn't trying to tell you to see how much it's going to figure out the cost. They were trying to explain to you, you need to stop it, and just, and like Jim said, if you've got a train conductor... I like how he put that, because if you're driving a train and you hear up ahead that the tracks have got a break in it, it takes a hell of a train conductor to stop that train and say, "Whoa, we need to call some big guys in here to fix this track before we take the train any further up." And this way, I look at this thing with the Pink Pony. When you go to Johns Creek, that's a bedroom community. When you go down to Forest Park, you have the Pink Pony at 85 with all the trucking companies, and then you have Forest Park way on the other side of Farmers Market, and it's just an older town with a lot of older people there. And when they heard about the Pink Pony, half of them didn't even know it was there, and then when they went away, and now they're wondering why their tax base is all going up and they're having to pay more property taxes. But I think we need to, like everybody said at the meeting the other night, and if y'all didn't see it, you really need to look at it, because there was about 40, 50 people there, and these were smart women, educated women, tax-paying women, and there was just a few of us guys there, but most of them, they told you what they wanted to hear. And I think that y'all all need to look at that and just, you know, really think about it. And then one of the other things I've had about... This is a change gears. I've had about eight of the restaurateurs around, and even though it's a great thing having the thing with the food trucks over the park, all the other restaurateurs want to know if these guys are paying any taxes to be in Brookhaven doing that every Wednesday night, but it's all taking away from their businesses. You have The Haven, you have Valenza, you've got Kaleidoscope, you've got Chin Chin, you've got, I mean, all kinds of other businesses that nobody's jumped on the bandwagon and rang a bell and said, you know, "We need to have police cars drag in traffic and bring everybody out." So for next year, let's try to do it once a month, and let's try to find something to support all our other restaurateurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Next?
I have no more cards, Mayor.
All right, anybody else want to speak? All right. Public comment section is closed. Consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Two items on the consent agenda. Both are minutes from previous meetings, the council work session on October the 8th and the regular council meeting minutes on October the 8th as well.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Announcements? Okay. Y'all ready?
Are you ready?
I don't know if I'm ready. You got a new hairdo, so you're a little sassy tonight. See some good, familiar faces here, some hard-working folks who helped build this city, and I'm very excited to have them back here, engaged in the way they are. And do you want to say something, Marie?
Unless you're going to, whichever.
I'll talk all night about them. There's a desire among some folks who are on the ground, trying to help get this city passed, who want to kind of continue some of that momentum in a way that benefits the city and its citizens, and they formed a group called the Friends of Brookhaven. And Shannon, or whomever, if you'd like to come up and tell us about what the Friends of Brookhaven are, I'd appreciate it.
Because you don't know?
I know, but I want to...
Everybody else to know.
I'm actually going to turn and face the crowd. Is that all right with y'all?
No.
Trey, are you going to get mad at me?
Yes.
So my name is Shannon Cameron.
You can take the microphone down if you'd like.
I know, but that's a little weird.
Just pull it out.
Just pull it out.
Can you hear me, Trey?
There's someone on the other side of it.
There you go. There you go.
So I'm the president of Friends of Brookhaven Foundation, and I want to introduce the rest of the board members and then kind of tell you a little bit about what our mission is, and more importantly, what our first project is, which we're very excited about. So the board members are JD Cockedale and Elizabeth Weiderstein. Come up, y'all.
All stand up.
Beth, come up, please, and Clayton Connerow. And we all were so excited about the formation of the city.
Did you say Beth?
I did say Beth.
Okay, I didn't kind of glossed over her name.
Do you want to help? Anyway, so we started Friends of Brookhaven Foundation very recently, and the goal is to help foster a strong sense of community in a new city, and I think we've got a really great opportunity to bring the community together and really build something exciting, something that's long-lasting. And the first project that we're kicking off with is our AED campaign. The goal is to buy portable AED defibrillators for all of the city locations and to put in every police car, and our goal is to meet that deadline by December 17th, so we can give it to the city as a birthday present. So right now, we need 64 automatic defibrillators, and we're looking for donations, friendsofbrookhaven.com for the record, and we're very excited about it. And as much as I would like to take credit for being so brilliant as coming up with this idea, our friend here from Dunwoody, Bob, I want... Can you come up for a second?
Bob Luntz.
He's going to tell us a very quick story about what they did in Dunwoody for this campaign, and then we're going to tell you a little bit about some of the donations we've already received.
The miracle of this is getting me to tell a very short story. I...
Folks, this is Bob Luntz.
Start the timer, but I had a brief meeting with Marie in Decatur about something, and I... This idea came across our table at lunch, and to give you a quick little background, in the same year as 9/11, my wife suffered a sudden cardiac arrest up at Sperry Berry High School in Cobb County at a volleyball tournament. She went 45 minutes by the heartbeat, 45 minutes without spontaneous respiration. It took 19 minutes for the EMTs to show up from Cobb County. They went to the wrong gymnasium, and by the miracle of God, and there is a God, if my wife were to walk in this room right now, you'd have no idea what she went through. And that led me to come up with a campaign for the city of Dunwoody. So I've got a challenge for y'all. I put the heart of Dunwoody together in the first year that Dunwoody was in, and I put 60 AEDs. I announced in the end of September, and I raised about $75,000 for the AEDs in a very short amount of time. Our goal was to have them done by Christmas, and we delivered the AEDs to the city of Dunwoody in the first week of November. Just a couple weeks ago, Dunwoody had Police Officer Irwin on his way home from work. They're in all the take-home cars in Dunwoody. Got a 911 call. We had changed the protocol to allow the 911 calls to go to the police force and the EMTs. Officer Irwin turned around, found a gentleman at one of the office parks, collapsed, not breathing, no heartbeat, and with three shocks of the AED, that gentleman is alive today. So the miracle is the fact that we have them. If it had been in Cobb County when my wife suffered a sudden cardiac arrest, my life would have been drastically different. You have an opportunity to give back to the community something that you hope you never have to use, but when you have to use it, it will change the life of every single citizen in this town. So the challenge is, do it quicker than I did and get it done, and you have a great group of people to do it.
Well...
Thank you, Beth.
I am beside myself happy to show this. You guys, we're already getting checks. So this was delivered tonight by the Siegel family, the Rogers family, and the Pickett family, $1,000 to buy an AED.
All right.
We have some other folks here who have checks. If I recall, I think the Rotary Club has a check for us. Come on.
Jonathan Burr from the Brookhaven Rotary.
I'm so glad you know everybody. Thank you, Jay.
Stan Siegel in the back. I guess you were part of that group, Stan, to give the money. Thank you, Stan.
And you guys, we actually have verbal commitments for five other AEDs already, so we're very excited about it. Again, the goal is to give them to the city on our birthday, December 17th.
Trey, will you share a picture with Melissa so the reporter can put a picture of this group and what they're doing in their reporter newspaper? And with the crier?
So Shannon's in charge of it, but apparently I remember wrong everyone's names, so... So we have some great donors. We haven't been really active yet, but tonight was a big kickoff tonight, and Bob, thank you so much for that. We have Brookhaven Rotary's in the back, Brookhaven Bank's donated. We have donations from InterDev, the IT company for Brookhaven. Hardy Ford, who we purchased the Ford interceptors from, has donated an AED. One of my neighbors has donated an AED tonight, so we're up to five total, including a gentleman named Chris Elsevier, who some people Mayor may not know, has donated some money. So we've got a great start, five AEDs, and back to Bob's challenge, let's do it faster than Dunwoody.
Everything's better in Brookhaven. Thank you, guys.
But does Clayton or Beth get to say anything, or Elizabeth?
Do they want to?
I think they should. Hello?
Do y'all have any questions for us?
Does our... The December 17th beat the Dunwoody, the heart of Dunwoody timed schedule?
It will, because we just launched yesterday, and so we're like two months down. We've got to get quick.
Okay.
So what is the fundraising goal to amount? The goal is to have 64 AEDs delivered, so the goal will be about $65,000. I'd like to round up to 70.
Okay.
Better be safe than sorry.
All right. You want to get up front and get a picture with the council, too?
Yeah, I assure you.
Let's do that. Let's get a picture. Yes, please.
Donors, hey, donors, my... For here, come on up. Donors.
I'm going to give $1,000 out of Jim Iyer if you want.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I tell you, that first life saved is worth a whole lot more than $70,000, so I'll take that check home.
Marie, did you have something else you wanted to add about this, about...
Yes, just to mention that the city is very excited about this program, and the initial meeting between Bob and myself, where Bob was describing his personal circumstances and what he did to raise funds so that it wouldn't happen to another family again, you know, I was so excited about that, and he said it really should be a fundraising event, and of course, I thought of Shannon, and I knew that Shannon was looking at the creation of Friends of Brookhaven. So the city has budgeted $30,000 to meet this initiative halfway. So we're really hoping that, you know, the community will step forward, will step up, and do the right thing, and pray to God that we never have to use that, but should it ever be used, that it will save a life.
Wow. Congratulations.
So how much are you trying to raise? $105,000?
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Shannon, Elizabeth, Beth, Clayton, JD, and Bob. Bob Luntz is the Lane Boras Chief of Staff, by the way, and...
I have a scoreboard and two chairs in the back of my car that'll bring you back to your parking.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob's making mention of some of the equipment that was removed from some of our parks not long ago, but thank you, Jonathan and Stan and the Rotary and the folks over in Hampton Hall. It was Hampton Hall folks, right? It wasn't? It was just... And Burnwick, okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Moving along to... That was great, and thank you for... Again, that's wonderful news, and good luck with the Friends of Brookhaven. Any reports and presentations? Okay. Old business? New business?
Yes, new business is the authorization for the mayor to execute and approve a contract for Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan and Economic Development Strategy.
Was there a motion, Jim, that you wanted to...
I move we authorize the mayor to execute a contract for the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan and Economic Development Strategy, subject to a cap of $120,000, which will be reduced as possible by the city manager to provide the scope of work and deliverables described in the RFP that was put out for the vendors to reply to.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of adopting the motion is stay, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion is passed.
All right, the motion is passed. Any other business? All right, and then we have public comment section again. Do we have anybody else who wants to have any? You have any cards, John? Daniel? Public comment section is open. Anybody? Any takers? All right, seeing none, public comment section is closed. Mayor's comments? Have no comments? Does anybody have any comments?
I'd like to.
Oh, hold on, let me decide if I shall grant you my.
Yield, yield your time.
Yield a little bit of.
I'd just like to thank Gretchen Roberts and the Brookhaven Arts Alliance for a fantastic festival. Been on Apple Valley this past weekend, on Saturday, Sunday. That continues to be a great event. This is their 10-year anniversary, and I thank them for putting that on.
All right.
I just want to make an announcement, if I could please. Ashford Park Elementary School is having their fall festival on November 2nd. I believe it's 11 to 3, and certain members of the community may be in the thong tank. We won't tell you who, but come and see it. Honorable mayor Maggie. So, but they'll have, obviously, kids games, and they're going to have a couple food trucks and other things, so November 2nd, Ashford Park Elementary School will have a fall festival. Come out and help support the school. Thank you.
One last reminder, October 29th, 6:00 PM, DeKalb County School Board Strategic Planning at the Cross Keys High School, 6:00 PM. We had, I had stated earlier, I thought it was 6:30 or 7:00. It is 6:00 PM, and come out and make sure your voice is heard about how we can improve our educational system. With the CEO, Michael Thurman. Superintendent Michael Thurman, thank you.
A reminder that this Saturday, the 26th, is the annual Holiday Traditions at Marist High School. It's their big arts and crafts festival. It brings people from all over the southeast. They have some 250 juried artists and crafters, and they always do their Cook Goose Cafe, where all the moms make some great breads and soups, and it's a big fundraiser for the parents. And that's this Saturday, most of the day, 9 to 3. Oh, and don't forget about this Wednesday, and next Wednesday are the last two food truck nights. So come on out to Blackburn Park. The weather's been fantastic, and we mix up the trucks, and so there's a variety of food. Two more weekends.
Yes.
Oh, and Halloween costumes on the Halloween.
The next one, the 30th is the Halloween costume one. Yes, and also tomorrow night, a good friend of mine named Nathan Shepherd is going to be playing at the food truck event, and he's a solo artist. He's a great eater, will be very sorely upset if you miss, because he's very good, so you need to come see him. That's tomorrow night, yes. He's from Athens, and he's a great talent. Also want to mention my birthday is Thursday, so budget accordingly.
And our city managers.
And Rebecca's was, when was yours? Friday, Friday, Saturday, and then mine's Thursday.
It's in Oktoberfest.
Yes. Also like to remind you that Murphy Chandler for the next two weeks is Pee-wee playoff football, and my son's team is playing tomorrow night. They have the Pee-wee Falcons versus the Pee-wee Giants, and I'm announcing the game. I've been announcing several games. I'm enjoying that, so. Nothing like a seven-year-old going 90 yards for a touchdown. It takes two hours, but it's hilarious. It's like a bobblehead running down the field. It's great. And they're having a bonfire Friday night, which they haven't had in so long, down at Murphy Chandler Park. We used to have one when I was a kid, and this one's a little more controlled, but they're having raffle, and there's a bonfire Friday night, so it's at Murphy Chandler Park. It's something I loved and grew up with as a child, and it's a great experience of bring your kids down there. It's a great, it's going to be probably 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, just all kinds of festivities. Also, what else is there? I just want to thank the Marty's Charette. Marty's Charette's scheduled on our homepage, which is the groups that have been meeting to discuss the possible development of a Marty's Station in the future.
Just two more days. It ends on Thursday.
And then remember again, our comprehensive plans that'll be kicking off, what is it, Marie, next month, December?
We expect the official kickoff to be the week of the city's birthday.
Okay.
And we have already released the request for qualifications, and our deadline is fast approaching for that submittal, and we'll be interviewing, and hopefully we'll be back to you sometime in late November with a recommendation.
So we've got the parks plan, the transportation plan, the comprehensive plan, and what's the other one? Beaufort Highway Plan.
Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan.
So if you want your voices heard on that, Friends of Brookhaven folks, y'all need to get in on that, and everybody here does. It's important to have citizen involvement. And we will have, if you missed the work session, there were two things that we announced about the sidewalk construction plan that's going to be this year. We should have something on the website in the next 10 days or so showing locations for where there'll be new sidewalks being installed this year in Brookhaven. Each council member has some spots in their districts they're identifying. If you have any ideas, let us know, but that's a very exciting thing. We have some funding that was set aside, and we're going to be constructing sidewalks this year. And if you live around a park, we're having some park improvements that are going to be done this year as well. A little bit less ambitious program than the sidewalks, but still, you know, some funds there to do some, make some real improvements to our parks this year, which is a great, a great thing. That's all I have. Thank you all for coming. We have to go into executive session one more time, so after we come out of executive session, all we're going to do is adjourn, so if you don't want to stick around, you don't have to, but it will be probably another 20 minutes or so. Is there a motion?
I move we go into executive session for a real estate matter.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned to executive session, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're in executive session.